Good evening and welcome to Heartland Township in the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, November 17th, 2016. We'd like to begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, just as our own.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure.
Chairman Fox?
Here.
Jeff Newsom, Joe Kleeny, Sue Grissom.
Here.
Mike Mitchell.
Here.
And Tom Murphy. Okay, roles complete. All right, thank you. Foreign attendance tide, huh? Item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second, support.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Grissom. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Next up, item five, approval of our meeting minutes. Approved the meeting minutes from September 8th, 2016. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Void, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes?
I have two types I'll cover with Troy.
Okay. Insignificant but important.
Yes. Insignificant.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Next up, item six, call to the public. Probably don't want to come up here, do you? Okay. Item seven, we have no public hearing, so we'll move to item eight A, which is site plan application number 543, Rural King. We don't have the applicant here this evening, so I think what we'll do is we'll turn it over to our planning director, Troy Langer, and then we'll figure out where we go from there.
All right, thank you. Rural King has, or I guess I should say its parent company, Bedford ABG LLC, has acquired the former Walmart shopping center located south of M-59. This is a site plan of that Walmart building, and Rural King intends to occupy a majority of that building, but not the entire thing. So they have about 75,000 square feet on the east side that would remain open for future tenant space over here. So the western, I'll call it two-thirds, just to be general, is going to be occupied by Rural King. And one of the changes that Rural King is, has requested as part of this site plan review is to provide additional outdoor display area. They wanted to expand, there's an outdoor garden area on the west side, I'm not sure if you can see it very well, it's in this area here, they wanted to expand it south so it comes down to match with the back of the building. So the expansion of the garden center here, and then they also want to incorporate what I'll call sidewalk display areas along the front, and that involves installing a wall that matches the facade of the building with some gaps in it to allow for pedestrian movement along the front here. So they could then display materials between the building and those screen walls here. And that's essentially the scope of the project. They hope to occupy and be open in this site sometime in the spring, so they're, they have been issued a land use permit to do some interior work. And in the staff report, I certainly have gotten much more detailed in describing these outdoor display areas, so for the purpose of presentation, I'll just keep it fairly vague. But there are a couple of points, I guess I did want to point out. They are proposing, I think it's a three-foot-high wall with then some decorative metal fence screening on top of it. The PD agreement for this property references an older zoning ordinance, and in that zoning ordinance, it specifically requires a screen wall be at least four-foot-high. So I would just ask that the zoning board or the planning commission here consider, if they do approve it, that it be at least a four-foot-high wall. Also, the fire marshal has commented that in this location over here, I'll try to zoom This area right here, there's an existing fire department connection, and they need that area to be clear of access. And they have concerns with this, I'll call it, this last screen wall here. They've outlined a few options for them. One is to install the water line under the sidewalk and have the connection on the outside of the wall. The other is to kind of just eliminate this last wall here. I think that's probably the most reasonable option there. So I've included their memo for you to look at as part of that. With that, I'll just leave it open for any questions or comments that you might have.
All right. Why don't we go through the letter? We'll cover it off. There isn't many there. Troy, would you flick this light on, because my eyes are bad enough where I can't read this in the dark. So if we take a look at the planning department's letter dated November 10th, first page or so there, there isn't much for us to review, just an overview of which Troy basically gave us. But I did have one point I wanted to bring up on page three on site layout. And I know this would be something that somebody that builds in the northern climates would know, but since they're coming from down south and we already had a construction snafu on the Walmart building when it was originally built, because they put the stacked stone on using southern climate application methods, and it started falling off the building. So they had to strip it and redo it all after they were open. But in the paragraph on page three labeled "Site Layout," there's a comment in the second paragraph. It says, "The proposed screen walls on the north and west will be constructed over existing paved areas." I know that's our verbiage. Would we in construction, will this go through a construction meeting with you guys or the building department? Are we going to get all the proper footings of Michigan winters versus southern Illinois?
Well, I'm not, I don't profess to be a construction expert.
Right.
But I think they were showing, I don't think it quite shows the foundation, but...
It doesn't tell you how deep the footings are. I just was curious if that's something that gets covered here.
I don't typically recall that the planning commission got that detailed on the foundation footings of stuff.
We don't. We don't.
They have to get a building permit, and I think they have to comply with a building permit.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Well, I guess just to kind of outline what the process after this is, and maybe that's always a good refresher course. This is not a complicated project, but typically after the planning commission approves it, then the next step would be to move on to what they call stamping or construction plans. And what we, as staff, does at that point is then you typically are looking at a lot more detailed plans that would show foundations. And then our job as planning is to confirm that those plans match up with the plans that were approved by the planning commission at their meeting. And then we'll go on to a pre-construction meeting so that everybody that's involved in the project has a copy of those plans, everybody knows kind of the protocol and the process to go through, and then we would issue, staff would issue, a land use permit for them to do work out there.
I think what threw me off on it, and it may be the selection of words in the letter.
Yeah.
But given that they are from down south, it says, "will be constructed over existing paved areas." So we're not going to be laying block on top of the sidewalk.
Okay.
I would think it would need footings.
I think you're right. Otherwise, it would, it seems like it could just get pushed over or not.
Pushed over, frost, movement, all those things. We're not looking for a temporary wall, we're looking for permanency. So I don't know what the building code would be on that, but if you just lay up a block wall four-foot-high on top of a sidewalk, I don't think it's lasting very long.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not a building code expert, but I don't know what the building codes would be on that.
It's outside our area of responsibility, but given that the stone was falling off the building because they weren't using techniques up north, I just, it just caught my eye. Okay? So I think we're really on page four at the top, where Troy had mentioned, they actually have five display areas.
Yeah.
And if you look at the back of the packet that you have, the last page on the backside, there's a drawing and they're labeled. And I don't, do you have it?
I do.
Oh, great.
I have to...
To get there, huh?
Get there, and I have to rotate it here. There.
All right. You want to hit these for us real quick?
Okay.
Each of them by area for us, and review what you've got in the paragraphs. That's probably the easiest way.
So part of the reason this was done was just to try to explain where all of the outdoor display areas are. And the first one's an existing one, and it's this area right here, this outdoor seasonal display area of 4,100 square feet. So this is existing, they're not really making too much in the way of changes on this one. So that's a, one of the outdoor display areas they'll be utilizing. Areas two and three are the sidewalk display areas. Their main entrance is right here, kind of by this B. And then two would be west of that, that would come all the way down to this outdoor garden area. And then three would be east of that. This is the areas where they are installing these, I'll call it, four-foot-high screen wall with decorative fencing on top. I've got some pictures. So this kind of maybe illustrates what that area looks like. I don't know how well that shows up there, if it's too dark. And then further down, kind of in front of the outdoor garden area, so you get an idea. This is a little unusual sidewalk because it's almost at grade with the, with the drive here, as opposed to some sort of a curb. I guess it's, maybe it's great for handicap accessible, but...
I think that's why it's there, that way.
So it's also not tremendously wide, so remember, we're going to be taking up some of the space with the screen wall for display. And one of the things that has been commented to me already about making sure we keep five feet of sidewalk width here, so...
Could we maybe make sure that happens by the conditions of our motion? Whoever makes that motion, would you please add that?
Yeah.
There you go.
Maximum height you want, or...
Well, we're talking the minimum 60-inch sidewalk.
Oh, great.
From the, from the edge of the sidewalk and parking lot to the outside of the screening wall.
Okay.
Since it's not labeled on the plan.
And, so that's areas two...
Now, what else did you want to change?
It is, but it's not dimensionally correct in the drawing part.
Okay. So Troy, could we cover all the things that we want to change on two and three?
Okay. So on two and three, so the first, I've just talked about the five-foot sidewalk. The second one would be to ensure that these screen walls are in fact four-foot in height of the brick material that matches the predominant brick material of the building facade. And then they can have a decorative fencing up to a maximum of 63 inches on top of those...
Total height.
Total height, yeah. Right. That's the second thing. The third thing is this westernmost screen wall over here. Really, there were three options given. Given that the applicant is not here, it's hard for me to say, well, which one do we pick? To me, it seems fairly obvious that the one that just eliminates this. However, I'll defer if, if the planning commission wants to go that way, great. If the planning commission wants to leave those three options available to the applicant to decide, that's fine with me as well.
Yeah, I think we can just let them meet.
Well, as he says, as far as the...
Satisfies the fire marshal's letter would be fine. My comment would be that Troy, if they opt for removing the section of wall, that the last westerly piece of the wall that remains needs to have the return wall put on it that was on the section that gets removed.
Yeah. So what you're saying is if this last section, that has a return portion...
Yes.
That that return portion then get put on the second to the last.
Well, and that'll help if they choose that option, which I'm betting with Troy they will, because it's the least expensive option, would be that it would make sure that the storage area stays, the storage mater, the display material stays away from that connection because it's blocked off. So we have three things to deal with on that, display area two and three.
Yeah. So, and then lastly, in this area, the fire marshal, it kind of just goes without saying, and I don't know that this is needed as a condition, but whenever you're reviewing these plans and the goal is to store display items here, we also have access points coming out here, and some of them are emergency access points, such as these doors down in this area. And the fire marshal has concerns that he doesn't want stuff blocked up, blocking those doors. I don't know that that needs or warrants a special condition. That's already a fire code, and we'll, that's probably going to be more of an enforcement end of things after this project moves forward. But just to also let you know, the fire marshal did have some concerns on that.
Others said to Troy, you know, it probably is a fire code, because I imagine they can't put stuff in front of the doors inside either.
Right. So that, that wraps up the areas two and three, which are the sidewalk display areas. Existing, area four is this other outside seasonal display area on the extreme west side of the building here. That particular one, and I think I've got some pictures to maybe show. So this is on the south side of that.
Well, that's looking from the south-north.
So, yeah, this would be, so there's a, on the south side of it here, the north side of the building would be just on the other side over here. You can kind of see a gate already there, and there's a gate here. Some of this is missing, and this is on the north side now, looking in, and you can kind of get an idea of what this outdoor display area looks like. They intend to put a gate in here that's not there, that was supposed to be there, and that gate will match what was approved. So I don't want to just let you say they're not doing anything here. There's been a little bit of disrepair in the short time this, this particular building has been sitting vacant. And so they're proposing things that would match the previous approval. But those really don't need planning commission approval for them to replace these gates that the planning commission has already approved, but they're going to clean this part of it up. That...
Yeah. Troy, on the south end, that would be true in the garden center, on the north end, is that, are those gates missing, or some of them?
Yep.
Because those actually, while not a requirement of us, they are a requirement that they do replace, and whether they want to or not.
Yeah.
Because all the storage material in there has to be behind...
Yeah.
The fence. So you'll just make sure that they meet that requirement.
Yes.
Said they want to anyways.
Yes.
I think they're looking at security.
Is that identified in the...
I didn't notice it in the plan.
I don't remember.
I just wanted to make sure it gets covered.
So that's, this is area four. They may take this gate here out, because as we get to area five, you'll see we're just expanding area four, if you will, so, but this gives you an idea of what that particular area looks like. So that's area four. And then moving on to the last area is area five. This one probably has the most complexity to it, because this area was essentially a parking lot, and what they're doing is removing these three parking spaces, so that caused us to have to look at the total parking on the site to make sure we had sufficient parking on there. And you can see in the staff report there, we do, there's, there's more than sufficient parking on the site. They're also then taking these curb islands out, and they are replacing it essentially with an asphalt for interior storage display. They are going to then extend the wall south and then to the back. This back area is primarily going to be the gate area to come into the, I guess they're saying the existing fence here is going to remain, so they're going to have a fence in between these areas. So that's this area. They have a couple of lights, pole lights, and I think I've got a, if you bear with me, I think I've got a few pictures of this area. So you can see a couple of the existing lights. They are going to have those remain. They'll just exist on those poles within the landscape area. And then one of the things that will be lost is all of this landscaping here. So that is area five. Okay?
So Troy took us page five. There isn't much to talk about, there's no assessment needed, the traffic, there's nothing to do there. Building materials, they're meeting, all the new materials match the existing building materials, so there's not much discussion there. On page six, item B, we already talked about the garden center and a minimum of four-foot height wall, so we've covered that. And item C, Troy went through the parking requirements. Even though they're adding all this outdoor storage area, by reading the staff review, it looks like you guys found that we don't include outdoor storage in our parking calculations.
Yeah, it's funny how you're talking to three parking spaces, and we have to go back and recalculate parking, not only on this site, but on the shopping complex next door, and reassess every use, every square footage. And we found out through all of that, that when the outdoor display areas, they never included them for parking, for off-street parking. So you, you wouldn't believe the amount of work that was done just for three parking spaces, but...
I've built a familiarity with the projects, probably at an all-time high right now. So we're on page seven, and that's where they went through all their parking calculations. As he said, there is no issue with parking. So if we move on over to page eight, they're removing some landscaping, but they're putting the garden center up, and it's fine. Outdoor lighting, they're not changing anything. So on page eight, we see DPW review, they have no comment. The engineer has no comments or concerns this time, and then we dealt with the fire marshal's comments, and you'll make sure those are taken care of when, when we put a motion together. So if everyone is comfortable with this, I know it's unusual, the applicant is here, my suggestion would be if you're comfortable with it and we want to move this along, we can. I guess if they don't like what we say, they can always come back. But this way, they have an opportunity to keep it moving, of which we know they are very interested in doing, and I think our comments are pretty minimal.
I just want to make two comments.
Absolutely.
You know, I know, you know, on other cases, when we've talked about outdoor stores, like a gas stations or whatever, that we always screen it. But when you look at this plan, the whole front of the building and the whole side of the building has outdoor storage around the whole bloody thing.
That's correct.
Except for the doorway. I just, as a comment, I don't think that's something we want to always strive for. I mean, it's kind of crazy. You know, and when you think about it, the quality of the projects we try to do, and now there's storage around the whole side and the whole front, a little opening for the door, just a comment, at the overall vision, it's not something that I feel really great about endorsing. Second, when we talk about the walk, the sidewalk, we'll make sure we have a five-foot-wide sidewalk. There are bollards going to be in that walk. I don't know if we want to define if it's clear sidewalk, but right now the bollards are within the area too.
Well, I think the ordinance probably does, so we probably need...
Probably says it has to be clear.
They probably either need to move the wall back further or remove the bollards if they don't need them.
Just to let you know, because they're like within, they're like 12 inches in from that zero curve. That's something else.
When we make the motion, we'll make sure of that, and then Troy can cover that with them, because they may choose just to remove them.
Yeah, I don't know if they'll be able to, and I don't mean to cut you off if you have more.
No, I'm done. I just wanted to just kind of step back, you guys, and look what we're doing.
If they'll be able to incorporate, if they're going to do a wall through here, if they could move those back so they're maybe within, in between the wall and, on either side.
Well, the bollards in front of the front door are fine.
Right.
It's the ones that are further down, is what she's saying.
Yeah.
She's saying there are from, there are some to the west of their main entrance.
Yep.
And those are the ones she's referring to.
There you go. You can see them.
So, which I'm saying, I'm not sure they need them. They can make that decision.
Yeah.
But she is correct, it's five-foot clear sidewalk.
I don't think we can, because we've done that with shopping centers and posts and pillars
holding the roof up.
Yep.
It's five feet from the inside of the pillar to the front wall of the building.
Right.
It's no different.
Well, they don't really need them anymore if they have a wall.
Yeah, if they got a wall, they shouldn't need them. And I'm saying, by reading that, when I said, "They're not going to put that block right on that sidewalk, are they?" Because I envisioned they're going to have to rip that sidewalk out anyways to trench it, to put footings in, to build a wall.
They may cut out, they may not tear the whole, I'll leave it up to them.
Absolutely. I just don't want them to throw the wall laying on top of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And Sue, you raise a great point, because this was a challenge when they came in with the outdoor storage, because we did have an informal meeting with them. This is almost the opposite of what their normal business plan is. Because my first reaction was, well, unless they change their business plan, I don't know how they're going to fit here. Because typically, they would take 25% or more of that parking lot, and it would be all over the place.
I remember you mentioned that before.
And if you go on their website, you would see that. So it was sort of a struggle. The garden center on the backside, on the side, seemed like an easy solution, because you hardly notice it there.
Right.
But for some reason, retailers today are just hung up on this stuff out front. I, I don't totally understand it, but, but I agree with what you're saying, and you know, as we review our ordinances in the future, you're on the ordinance review committee, we want, may want to look at a maximum amount of this out front. Because they have stretched across every single inch of this building, up one side and down the other.
Right.
And is that really what we wanted in the end?
Yeah, I don't know if, behind the scenes, before this got here to this meeting...
Sure.
Just to give you a little bit of background, this, almost this entire parking area over here was proposed to just have outdoor display. No fence area, just within the parking lot for utility trailers that they sell. And several areas in the parking lot in front, they had asked if they could use to display other things, including landscape material, and they also wanted to have on, in front of the entire building, without the fence and wall that we're talking about, lawn mowers and snow blowers and other things that they would sell. So this is somewhat of a compromise. And if you recall, when Tractor Supply came in, they had a similar request, and that was somewhat of a compromise. And since they were first, and that was brought up there, we just pointed out that here's what we've done in another circumstance, and they somewhat hopped on that.
Sure.
But I do think Sue brings up a valid point, and it may be something for discussion with the commission as a whole at some point, that we may want to limit it and say, you know, 50% or 70% or something less than 100.
Yeah.
Because they have truly stretched the whole front of the space that's theirs. Now, the other third that they're leasing obviously won't have that, because they're not going to put a competitor in there. But it's a great point, and I appreciate it, actually.
You know, to follow up a little bit with that, one of the concerns I had was, when he starts spreading all that outdoor storage across, around the building, I'm curious, and I wish you were here, I'm curious to find out what tenants they typically share that with, because it's got to be difficult to find a tenant that's their merchandise, merchant, that wants to share that outdoor storage... that wants to share that outdoor storage look.
Well, I think it has limits. I don't know how much they actually have situations like this. If you go to their website, it looks like they buy defunct Kmart stores and small department stores that are not of the size of this. And this building is much bigger than they're used to taking, because you can see they're only taking two-thirds of it. So that's a good point, another great point.
And you see it's empty. I mean, we got buildings around here now that's been sitting half-empty.
Well, you know what, I'll be honest with you, I'm happy that somebody has come in. I mean, Walmart just closed this last spring.
Right, February.
They're planning on opening this spring. You're talking a year on a complete turnover of a huge piece of commercial real estate in this township. That's pretty good.
Yeah.
A lot of communities probably would sit on that a while.
The only other interesting thing I thought, I noticed was, I think there's a three-foot spacing between the screening walls, different.
They picked it up off of Tractor Supply?
Yeah, well, I mean, it kind of limits their area that they can work with. I mean, they understand that they can't expand out and fill in these gaps, correct?
Correct. And Troy, you know, maybe it should be, is it, is it very clear, is it in writing? I know you've requested that the corporate headquarters send a letter to the township verifying that they're going to comply with all of this outdoor storage, but the material on display cannot exceed, it has to be behind the wall and cannot exceed the height of the wall.
One of the goals, that condition that I've drafted in there, having the corporate offices prepare a letter stating they acknowledge and agree that they will put their outdoor display within these designated outdoor display areas, is from experience in other communities, the people that show up at these meetings and say, "Don't worry, we'll have everything behind the walls," and then the store gets built, or the store is up and running, and then there's a store manager that operates the store who is not here at these meetings, who is just doing their job of promoting their company policy, which is to get everything sitting outside. And then you show up to inform them that they're in violation of the zoning ordinance, and they of course claim, "Well, I had no idea, sorry about that." Then everything's brought in for a while, and then it's all back out again, and you go and visit, and it's a different store manager, and they of course knew nothing of this either. So, one of the goals is, you know, sometimes you learn from a few mistakes, and you're trying to prepare yourself for the future, is to be able to tell them, "Well, you know, this is what your corporation agreed to when they were in here, and here's the letter that says so." So, I can't predict, we'll eliminate all that in the future, but hopefully this will aid in getting the stuff where it should be.
Could we include in that, in the designated areas, not to exceed the height of the screening walls?
Sure.
Because that also includes the big garden center that has a 12-foot-high wall. They can't put 14-feet material behind it.
Yeah.
It needs to be at the wall height or below.
If...
And the screening wall out front is the same way.
Yeah, if you want to specifically, I think the PD is pretty clear to that already, but if you want to make it just another comment, I don't have any problems with that.
I think we should just make it over and over and over, in every angle we can. My concern with all of this has always been the enforcement issue.
Right, yes.
It's not been getting a site plan that we can approve. I knew we could get there. It's the enforcement issue, and we can't have, we can't burden the township with having to hire a full-time employee to run around these places.
And that's my concern, is it's going to be an enforcement issue, because you could interpret behind the wall as being laterally behind the wall. But yet, we don't want to see anything in between the gaps. But their argument's going to be, "Well, it's behind the wall," and that's, that's the concern I had about the three-foot gap.
Well, if you can find a way to word that, and no, seriously, I would get that in your motion, so that it's just covered. We're trying, we have to cover all the bases, and think about the things that don't get thought of. Because what happens is 18 months from now, we'll get caught on a, "Yeah, but oh, we forgot," or "We didn't think about that." So I don't think there's anything wrong with having more detail than less.
Sure.
It's just clarification. And they're going to receive a copy of this, you know, of the motion. They're going to know what their requirements are by a letter you're going to...
Yeah, one of the new things, and I'm probably not doing as good of a job of updating the planning commission on little tiny changes that are being made behind the scenes, but one of the things that is a change is, after every decision that this body makes, we now send a letter to that applicant and outline, the planning commission approved it, or made a decision on this date, and then here are the conditions. So, we were running back and trying to, on some of these older ones, looking for a letter. That was somewhat common practice of where I come from, and there was no letter, so you'd have to get out the minutes, and then you'd have to get out the site plan, and you weren't sure, well, is this the site plan that they were looking at at that particular meeting? So this letter will, outlines that the approval is based on that site plan dated, whatever it's dated, and so that there's at least some clear, now that letter does not, does not replace your decision, it is just merely echoing and memorializing the decision made. The official decision still comes from the minutes of your decision, but it's at least some document you can reference that, here's all the pieces to that puzzle in one place, so...
So if you're comfortable, as I said, you can either advance this particular program with the recommendation given, or we could table this to a future meeting when they are in attendance.
Is that correct? You know, it's a tough, it really is a tough question. From my experience in other, with other communities, that was the direction that those communities took, fearful of doing something, that they weren't here. But this case, I don't have any problems with moving forward with those conditions that we've talked about. Certainly, everything there that we've talked about are things that the applicant is aware of in some form or another. They got a copy of the staff report, which outlined the fire marshal's comments, even though we didn't have it in a letter, we had those comments in the staff report. And even though they didn't, weren't specifically told about the four-foot screen walls, there's a condition that is mentioned in the staff report. I don't have any problems with moving forward with a motion to, to help them out and move this project along.
And I agree with everything you said. In addition, the four-foot wall comment versus the three-foot wall, it's not an option. It was a three-foot wall, because in our informal, we told them three to four foot, not having thought to go back into history. And as we got into the history, as staff got in the history, it was discovered that it had to be a minimum of a four. So, it's not an option. So even if they don't like it, their option is to not put anything and not have any outdoor storage. I agree with Troy, these are, these are probably relatively insignificant in their world. They've come so far to get this, and we're really not changing their plan. As you please.
I might need help with the last one.
Okay.
Is this a motion to approve?
I think it just moved to approve.
Is there a site plan?
Yeah.
543? Okay. I move to approve site plan number 543, under these conditions, within these conditions. The applicant shall provide a letter from the corporate offices of Rural King stating that the outdoor display of merchandise shall only occur in designated areas as approved by the township. Applicant complies with any requirements of the DPW director, township engineer, and fire marshal. Number three, complying with the PD agreement to increase the screen wall height to four feet with a 15-inch ornamental fence, not to exceed 63 inches. Number four, a minimum of five-foot sidewalk with clear path between the parking lot curb and the outside edge of the screen wall. Number five, screening of products must ensure, must ensure the understanding that would include no merchandise protruding into the vacant areas of the wall.
Or exceeding the height of the wall.
Or exceeding the height, sure.
Or exceeding the height of the wall.
I thought that was part of the ordinance.
Anything?
Yes. Do we want to add the comment that in displaying areas two and three, they must maintain clearance for the fire department connection?
Let's comply with it.
Will that get it in two, Troy?
Yeah.
Complying with the fire marshal's letter will get it, as long as that gets it. Because you know what, Mike won't approve it if they don't. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Voight. Do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay. So, we have a motion with conditions to approve site plan application number 543 for Rural King, from Commissioner Voight, second from Commissioner Grissom. Any further discussion? All those a favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, may motion carries. We'll let the record show that we welcome them to Heartland, wish them a lot of good luck, and look forward to seeing their grand opening in the spring. 8B, this would be back to Troy.
This one, let me see here. On this one here, I just wanted to briefly talk about this. This is a survey that you've all seen pertaining to code enforcement of signs, various types of signs, donation boxes, donation bins, flags, roadside stands, et cetera. That survey was taken by you on the planning commission, as well as township board members. In the memo I've got, I've attached a copy of the, and the results of that survey. There's some differences there between the board and the planning commission, and this is a tremendous guide to staff, to really guide staff on what are the important issues here at the township to enforce, and what, maybe there's some weaknesses in our ordinance we'll need to address. And I also touched on a Supreme Court case that kind of addresses some of that stuff, and did a survey of some other communities as to how those communities have responded to that Supreme Court case. This particular item, I think it would, would involve some discussion. I'd like to have some discussion on that. And in light of what I've got under my planner report, which is, I have to admit, I'm not entirely sure what your process is to establish the ordinance review committee, so under planner reports, I'm asking if we can initiate the ordinance review committee, and I have a few items that I'd like to bring there, that I'm kind of being asked to bring there. And I wonder if this might be a better fit to at least discuss in some detail at a meeting like that, and then present back to the planning commission. So, I guess my thoughts were to get this to you, get you thinking about it, plus we don't have a full board here tonight, and I really want to, this is one of those topics I'd like to get input from all of you on the planning commission. So, on this one, I might just ask if that's something you're okay with, to just defer this to the ordinance review committee, or if you want to defer it to another meeting where there's a full board that we could discuss it on. So, I've given you a little background on it, and I'm just going to step back, and if you want to, we can engage in it, or if you want to move it forward to another meeting or to the ordinance review committee, I'll wait for your comments on that.
My comment would be, we're missing three people. So, I would, I would say either send it to the ordinance review committee to start it, or bring it back to an agenda when we have got at least six members. I know it's tough to get seven, that's my opinion, what's yours?
Yeah, I agree. In fact, I would feel very comfortable if you sent it to the review committee and let them...
At least start it.
Well, if you don't, you're going to be sorry. Looking through here, I've been on the ordinance review committee for quite a few years, and we've covered probably every one of these that's on here. And it doesn't look like much, but you can spend hours, just the agricultural signing alone was almost two days' meeting. And we probably need to start with the review committee, find out where the concerns are, and I think some of this is more enforcement than it is change, but I can give you a history of, you know, which ones were changed and why, and why they're like that, pretty much. And so we can cut a lot of this extra conversation that's probably already been, so be redundant conversation. And they, believe me, they're not going to want to go through it because...
We're hap, we are very confident in our ordinance review committee members.
Absolutely.
I think they are outstanding members of the committee. Two of them are sitting right there.
Yeah, the committee's been established since first years.
I just, I wanted to, I didn't know if it was a formal process to, that the planning commission needed to kind of make a motion to send something to them, or if it was just a matter of me getting on the phone, calling, and so I thought I'd just kind of ask that here. I didn't want to offend anyone by...
Yeah, historically, we've talked about it, and we know things are going, we, it's a general awareness factor. So I think you've probably accomplished that here with the four of us, and at some point, what we'll probably want you to do at a future meeting, since we're missing three members, I'm sure this will be in the meeting minutes, but you may at a planner's report, give us an update that you guys have met and you're working on this or that, because I believe you said you have some other things you want to mention at the next agenda item, so...
And sometimes the review committee kind of gets locked, and don't know which direction to go, and we look for more input, and we'll bring, have you bring that back to the commission. And so, they're probably going to get involved in some of this at some point in time anyway, but it won't have to be full depth, with a full review.
It probably could be a three or four-hour meeting if you wanted it to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, we'll move to item nine, call to the public. No, you're not coming up, are you? Anything you want to say? Anything you want to tell us about school?
You're only here because you have to be, right?
If school's good? All right. I'll be darned, we're up at planner's report already again, boy. I hope you don't have laryngitis by the end of the evening.
I have a few items on the planner's report, and at the top of it is that ordinance review committee. So I just wanted to outline, to give the, those members of the ordinance review committee that are here, kind of what's coming to you. One of those items, well, two of them pertain to the special event ordinance. The first one is the farmer's market right now is going through some changes, and they've learned, as I, as I understand it, they've learned that visibility in certain areas is more important than other locations, and so they are asking for some changes to the special event ordinance to accommodate that farmer's market, and so that'll probably be something we'll discuss at that. The other one is Winter Fest. Winter Fest is a, somewhat of a new event, I think it's occurred a couple of years here. It's not specifically mentioned in the special event ordinance, and I think it's grown to the point where it probably deserves some sort of recognition in there. I don't think that one will involve as much discussion. Maybe we could tackle that first and get that one out of the way.
It's coming up, it's coming up first.
Yeah.
You better hurry.
The next one is a private road ordinance. This one is a, is a little tricky, and this has kind of come to light. Some of the developers have raised some concerns with the cost of doing development in this community. There was a little committee forum to hear what those concerns are and examine it, and as part of that, this private road ordinance, there appears to be some areas that could be tweaked that maybe would aid in saving some money to the developers, without necessarily lessening any of the standards and review of the township. So that one has kind of risen up. I don't always have control of the priority of some of these things, so, and also, along with that... And also, along with that, the engineering standards, I've learned it's been since like 2008 that we've looked at that. So it was kind of suggested politely that maybe we should just take another look at it. Not that we would necessarily change anything, but at least take some time to look at it. And lastly, the township board establishes a strategic plan, and when I came into this position, I kind of assumed the responsibility of completing that. And I have a lot of red dots under the end of some of those things, which means I'm not meeting that. And part of them are to amend some of the ordinances, and so I'd probably like to have the ordinance review committee take a look at that and decide how they want to proceed with it. So those are a handful of things that are on my list to bring to the ordinance review committee. And once we've kind of convened, I would be amenable to listening to anything else that other committee members have, or any other planning commissioners have, that they think would be worthwhile looking. So don't look at my list as exhaustive in the total list. It's just giving you a heads up of what I, what's triggering me to call that committee to come and knock these things out. So the next item I wanted to bring to your attention, and it was land use permits. These are some things that the planning commission doesn't always see. There's some things that go on behind the scenes when somebody wants to build a new house. Part of that approval is to get a land use permit. After they get a land use permit from the township, they go to the county and obtain a building permit. We're at about the number 9,900 and something in our numbering sequence of land use permits, which means we continue with that numbering system and get to number 10,000, which adds a new digit. Or we look at revamping our numbering system. So we're examining, renumbering land use permits, and we said, well, if we're going to change that, why not look at sign permits and land divisions and all of these stuff we do administratively with just staff, and then maybe even site plans, planned developments and so forth. And right now, we're considering more of a year-based number system. For example, a land use permit, a new one maybe in 2017, would come with a number of 2017-1, and then some designation that that's a land use permit. So that'll allow us to kind of better track when that land use permit occurred, as opposed to number 9,962, which you would have no idea when that was, other than to look at it and look it up. And I just wanted to run this by you and see if there's any concerns. I don't want to make these changes without talking with the planning commission. And sir, if there's any concerns you've got, or any thoughts or suggestions, I just ask you, share those with me, and feel free to call me anytime, and let me know what your thoughts are. This is not something I'm looking to implement right away. I'm probably looking at doing this in 2017. So keep that on your thoughts, and let me know what your questions are about that. There's some hurdles I've got to overcome on that. I only have so many digits I can fit in there in the system, but I just wanted to let you know of it. The last, or the second, the next one is, I wanted to provide a little bit of an update on the Newberry mixed-use development. The last time that this body heard or saw anything on Newberry, I think it was like April of 2016. At that time, we did about three back-to-back-to-back late meetings to go through that mixed-use project. As you know, it's a fairly big project. There's a lot of issues with that. One of the issues that was unresolved was the approvals from MDOT, as well as the County Road Commission. They've been working with MDOT and the County Road Commission. There've been a couple of meetings on that. We've had a few letters come back from MDOT on that. So there's, they've gone great strides with MDOT on obtaining their approvals and getting their permits. There's still some hurdles to overcome on that. I expect here, probably not in the too near future, they'll be back in front of you with what I presume will be a revised site plan based on the comments that the planning commission shared with them. We drafted a letter to them, and went through the minutes of those three meetings and put together a letter. So that letter will be shared with the planning commission as well, as well as the minutes. And you'll have the video if you want to go back and sit through the video of it as well. So it looks like we're moving forward with their MDOT and County Road Commission approval. So I have not seen a revised site plan on that yet, but that project is still moving forward, and I did want to share with you. And then also, there was a sale. If you recall, this has two properties. There's a north 30 acres and a south 78-acre piece. The township did sell the north 30 acres to Mayberry Homes, or one of its LLCs. And then there was a division, the gentleman that is interested in doing a gas station on the south side, and was also depicting a gas station on the north side. If you recall, he wasn't necessarily sure he was going to do a gas station on the north side, but he just wanted to make sure nobody else could do a gas station. So if there was going to be one, it was going to be him. There was a split of two-acre piece for him on that north side. So part of what happened there, without getting into too much detail of it, is he had some capital investment money he needed to invest or pay a significant taxes on, and he wanted to invest it in this project. And so that was to somewhat accommodate him and show the township is interested in moving forward with this project. So feel free to contact me if there's any questions on that project, but that is moving forward.
Well, but I would add, just for anybody watching at home, in the planning commission, it doesn't mean the project's approved. It's at his own risk.
Yeah.
If the project does not get approved, he just owns a nice two-acre parcel on the corner, and that's all he has.
Yeah. That's exactly right. That both, Mayberry Homes took a risk in purchasing the property without any approval, and then he took a risk in purchasing two acres off of it as well.
Right.
So lastly, I guess not completely lastly. One of the things that I'm looking at implementing in the review process that occurs somewhat before you see a site plan. Right now, when a new site plan comes in, we distribute that out to the reviewing agencies, which would be the Department of Public Works, our engineering consulting firm, and the fire authority. And we get letters back from them, and we'll attach them in the staff memorandum, and they're there for your review. That part of it would remain the same. What I'm looking to do is to incorporate a meeting where we bring those same agencies together. It's primarily just staff. We sit down, we go through, and make sure, sometimes we can have conflicting comments. I haven't seen it yet here, but I know it can happen, and maybe iron out those issues. And then sometimes, just when you're talking, and you hear the fire marshal comment on something, that can trigger Public Works to think about something that they didn't include in their letter. So we're looking at incorporating a development review meeting before these plans get here to the planning commission. Initially, it's just to include just the township staff, if I can call it that, the engineering consultants, not truly that, but if you know what I mean. And then lastly, we have a draft calendar for 2017, pretty much done. I did have just a quick question for you to think about. For the most part, it follows your same schedule of the second and fourth Thursday of every month, with the exceptions of November and December. And in December of 2017, the third Thursday is like the 21st of December. So that would be just before the Christmas holidays. So if that's something that you think is, we'd want to maybe switch to a first and a second, or if you just...
For December? I'm scrolling there right now.
Yeah, December. So...
So you're, yeah, you're suggesting that we...
I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just drawing that.
Well, did you pick the first and third in December, then?
Yeah.
The 7th and 21st? Because I don't think we want to meet between Christmas and New Year's.
No, I wasn't, I'm just pointing out that if you, your typical schedule is the second and fourth Thursday of every month, except November and December, where you switch to the first and the third. And on that one, when the first seems to be fine, the third, and I'm not advocating we move that back, I'm just letting you know, that is the Thursday just before the holidays there. So...
Wait a minute. I think, why is my calendar not showing Thanksgiving? But, so it would be November 2nd and 16th? That sound right? Then there would be a three-week break, which we've had before, and then we would go December 7th and 21st?
That's the anticipated.
Okay. So what are you saying is an option if we don't do...
Oh, I'm not saying anything. I'm just bringing that out to your...
Well, why are you even talking about it then?
I just wanted you to be aware. In case you were...
I don't know if you're this far ahead on your holiday planning. I haven't gotten to Thanksgiving this year, let alone Christmas next year. So are you, so the calendar basically follows our typical routine?
Yeah. Yep. That's it. That's all I've got.
Well, we would typically approve that, so are you thinking we've got a meeting in December?
Yes. We have, we've got quite, we've got a couple cases that we're looking at for December, December 15th. So I'm not, I don't have anything. In fact, I would expect that we will cancel our first meeting in December, and then go with the December 15th meeting.
Something happens that we don't, I believe we can probably, we'll have to check the bylaws. I think I can call a meeting. We don't need a motion, and we could always call the first meeting for January on the regularly scheduled and approve the calendar then, maybe? There's got to be a will. Where there's a will, there's a way.
Sure.
Okay. That all?
That's it.
Well, you are longer than our applicant on the site plan, Rural King. Holy cow. All right. Committee reports. Anybody anything?
We got a couple.
Sure.
Just on the ordinance review, don't forget canopy lighting. And I think Larry wanted to address the industrial architectural standards, correct?
Well, I think that's probably on your list, isn't it?
He didn't mention them, sorry.
Yeah, that's, the strategic plan items, I didn't want to get into too much detail. I felt I had a pretty long one, but that's...
I think we picked two of the three that you had in there. We picked that.
Typically, yes.
Yeah. And that would go to them first.
Yep.
To make things a little more efficient, sometimes if we try to have you guys, the planning department, do a little legwork before the meetings, and that kind of works out better. So if you just keep that in mind when you call a meeting, and maybe if there's a meeting, some of them you can't really do anything about, but, so kind of be prepared with some. Sometimes we look for input from other townships.
Sure.
That they do. Of course, your suggestions and...
Oh, sure.
Okay. I did see MDOT out there Tuesday, counting at the corner, Pleasant Valley and 59, so it must be getting a little more serious. And the only, I just want to make a comment about your new planning review process you mentioned about the meeting. Do you anticipate that lengthening the time for an applicant to wait for a review?
No. The typical process, just to give you a little background, they almost have to submit their site plan a month before the meeting. And so that allows us to distribute the site plans to those reviewing agencies, to give them a week or so to review it, to also give staff a week or so to prepare a staff report and include those comments. And then one week is eaten up of just, once we send it out to the planning commission, it's almost a full week before the meeting. So the goal would be to do that meeting during that time that staff is preparing the staff report. So after we've gotten the comments from the reviewing agencies, we just have a meeting, I don't anticipate it would take that long. Maybe we'd have an hour to kind of sit down and go over it. And then if there's anything else that came of it, we could then incorporate it into the staff report.
Well, just the reason I ask is, I mean, it's a lot easier to sit at your desk and do a review and punch out a letter to you and a response, but you have three agencies that need to get together in a meeting, and that, you know, I mean, it's not always that easy. That's why I'm concerned about adding...
That's why it's just, we're just looking at the staff. They're here, hopefully we can...
Well, the engineering firm.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how that's going to work with them. The goal is to incorporate them. It may be that that's something we'll have to work out down the road. The goal is just to sit down. One of the, my fears of it is that they won't be doing their review. They'll wait to show up at the meeting and then start to comment on it as they see it. So I want to make sure they continue to do their review. It always helps to come to those meetings prepared, as opposed to showing up and opening up the plan for the first time, so.
Okay. All right. Anything else? No? We need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support would be Commissioner Mitchell, and second by Commissioner Voight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion carries. Good night and thank you.